Well, now I'll call this special council meeting to order. And you have a proposed agenda for you to, for the night, tonight's meeting. And I'd entertain a motion now to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. You have minutes from the June 12th, 2018 special workshop meeting and the June 21st, 2018 special workshop meeting, or special meeting. And also, there's three consent items. And this time I'd entertain a motion to adopt the minutes and the consent items.
So moved. Second.
Have motion and second discussion. Here not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. First item we're going to look at tonight is this Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment on Temporary Use Standards. And you want to start this off, Dr. Wooders?
Yes, counsel, as you know, over the last several months, we've been working with the Onslow School Board relative to certain needs that they have due to an expanding student population. We've worked with Steve Meyer of the school system and also Ryan has come up with what we believe is a reasonable approach. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ryan to walk through the temporary use standards and then move on to the other items so that you can see the amendments that would be necessary in order for the school system to move forward with their temporary classrooms. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, counsel. As Dr. Wooders stated, we have been working with the representatives from the school system and Park and Associates. And to kind of go back through some background that we shared with you, I believe it was back in March now, was it March or May? The school finds, the school board finds themselves kind of under some pressure because of some recent House bills that passed, which dictate the classroom size as relates to your younger K through three, I believe it is, in terms of the number of kids in those classrooms. So they're faced with the mandatory size reductions, which means the school before may have had 20 classrooms and that could handle so many kids. Now, that number of classrooms, it shrinks. So they're looking to supplement that with modular or temporary classrooms. So staff looked at this and said, you know, what we have, we think works pretty well. However, there's really not a caveat that would allow either staff or city council the ability to consider situations like this to where you may want to allow more than six temporary classrooms at a particular location. So for the most part, the ordinance, other than tweaking the terminology from relocatable classrooms to relocatable classrooms and other school-related structures, we think that leaving the number of six is adequate for staff to approve. Anything beyond that would require your approval, city council. And we would do that through a zoning permit that would be turned into our office. We would review it, make sure that it meets the use-specific standards that we'll go over here in just a second. We would send it to you in the management report, and then that would be deemed approved unless there was any objection by city council. And that's going to be on a case-by-case basis for specific time periods. So staff can go to six for three years. And then we were also proposing to tweak the language as it relates to versus that they had to prepare a plan and submit that to the Board of Commissioners that basically they needed to do it, but it wasn't a requirement that we wouldn't be able to do anything had they not done it. So just gives us a little bit more latitude. So if you see under the attachment A in your agenda packet, really just some housecleaning items. And the main issue there is allowing city council to approve more than six, which you'll find under the duration period primarily.
Would you read the duration period, please?
Sure. Temporary classrooms and associated covered, not enclosed walkways may be approved for a period of up to three years by the city manager or his or her designee. This period may be renewed for up to two additional years by action of city council. After the initial three years, temporary structures are on-site, the Onslow County Board of Education should aggressively pursue, one, the definitive plans for their removal and replacement with permanent construction, and, two, a funding request shall be included in the next available Onslow County Board of Education budget request to the Onslow County Commissioners. Any subsequent extensions beyond the five-year period are at the discretion of city council. Upon termination of the temporary classrooms and/or at the end of the duration, the structure shall be removed within 60 days. The other part with, as it relates to six... can be found under specific regulations, and it talks about no more than six temporary structures are allowed at any given school unless specifically approved by city council on a school-by-school basis. And, you know, that's, that's the primary idea behind this leave staff, you know, the ability to prove up to six, like we'll be able to process Belle Fork Elementary's request where they're wanting to add two more. However, in a situation with Carolina Forest where they want to add the 12th unit, that would require city council approval.
Now, that's the amendment needed to the UDO. There is a companion document. Do you want to talk about that at this time, too, or do you want to?
I'd rather keep it separate.
Keep it separate. Okay. Counsel, the difficulty that, that we face is obviously one of funding. But I would also echo the comments that each of you made at the discussion several months ago. The city does not want to become known as the mobile home, pardon the bluntness, the mobile home school system. Quality of life is essential for the city to grow. If you're going to have new subdivisions or new expansions into Williamsburg or any of the other vacant property along Western Boulevard or out in Ramsey Road or out on 17, we have to have a school system inside the city that shows the quality of life you get when you live in the city. While I would encourage you to approve this change to the UDO, I would also encourage you by separate action to authorize the mayor to send a letter on behalf of the full council to the chairman of the school board and all members of the school board stating to them your cooperation, but your sincere concern that this does not reflect the quality of life that we are trying to build in the city of Jacksonville. Obviously, that's up to you. Going back to the amendment, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask the staff on the approach we're taking?
Was there some mention about the three-year period that at the conclusion of the school board should have made a request for funding?
Why don't you read that again, please?
All right, so the end of the three-year period, there's two, two things. The Onslow County Board of Education should aggressively pursue the definitive plans for their removal and replacement with permanent construction, and, two, a funding request shall be included in the next available Onslow County Board of Education budget request to the Onslow County Commissioners. And that's similar language that we have currently, that's been in the policy since the 99 timeframe. It's kind of, we've kept that same verbiage for the most part along the way.
Is there any reason to wait three years? I would think that the, the time to act is with the approval, knowing how long it takes to get a school approved, designed, and built. You're talking about three years at least.
Well, we could easily change the wording so that it's understood at the time that the approval is given, that at that point, they shall do the following things, because you're certainly correct.
Request for funding, yeah.
Okay. We can make that change?
Is that for any number of units, or when they go beyond six, or?
I would say, going back to the question of quality of life, any number affects the quality of life, so start with the first deviation.
So what, what is the limit going to be as far as how many can be on one site now?
Well, technically, the limit is not set. The limit is going to be however many you, as a council, will approve. What it is saying again is that the staff can approve up to six, not up to, but six or less, through your actions and your successors-in-time actions, they could go up to any number...
We're not talking about six new ones, we're talking about what's on the ground already also.
That's correct. Now, technically, at Carolina Forest, if I understand correctly, there are 11 units there now, and they want to add a 12th. So part of what you'd be doing is approving that 12th unit. And if they want to put in a 13th, or a 16th, or an 18th, they have to come back and get your approval.
And that would be through your management reports moving forward. We're not asking for any approvals tonight on the actual number of units, this is just the text amendment.
So are there any plans thus far of any schools being funded for funding has been approved?
Well, Mr. Myers is here, so I will give up my seat and ask him to come up and ask that, please, please.
Mayor, as far as scheduled, scheduled right now, we have joint funding policy that, with the county. And we do have two schools that are scheduled, that looks like we're scheduled to open up in 2021. One's going to be off of 258, one's going to be in Stump Sound area. Well, we're talking about mobile classrooms. And I know Carolina Forest has, has 11 right now. Dixon Elementary School has 13. And we're looking at adding additional four more right now for them. So they're, they're above and beyond any other school that we have right now. That's one of the reasons why we're focused on that. That being said, for 2021 is when we're talking about opening those two schools. In 2025, we're also scheduled with a joint funding formula, as it stands, to open up another school in 2025. This school in 2025 would be to offset some capacity constraints that we have in Belle Fork, I mean...
Carolina Forest.
Carolina Forest, Commons Elementary, and even maybe possibly Belle Fork, Belle Fork area as well. So we're looking at, we have a scheduled plan. Unfortunately, what we're doing is we're, we try to climb out of the hole. And we're behind, I mean, we're overcapacity at several schools throughout the county, and so we had to hit the most drastically impacted first. And, and while we understand that Carolina Forest and Belle Fork and some of the city schools are also severely impacted, the schools that were hitting first are the ones who are even more drastically impacted than what city schools were. So, but we do have a schedule for 2025 in the joint funding formula.
Ryan, can you read the proposed modified wording, or are you ready yet?
Yes, I'm working on it. What I'm looking at is under the duration, is striking through what we had proposed as after the initial three years, temporary structures on-site, change that to once there's a need for a temporary classroom, then they shall aggressively pursue those items.
Mr. Bennett, is that the antenna of what you're suggesting? Any other thoughts?
Okay. Yep. It's not all you had, Ryan?
Yes, sir.
So we're required to hold a public hearing on this text, text ordinance change. So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular council meeting, open a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone present that wishes to speak on this issue? Hearing, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing, reconvene a regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to consider the text amendment.
I'd like to make a motion that we approved the, the UDO text amendment as modified by discussion here tonight regarding timing of a letter sent to the Board of Education.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Motion carries. Agenda item number five tonight, this is public hearing on Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, Amendment to Article Two. And Jeremy Smith will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. This is a UDO text amendment for basically our subdivision standards. This is an effort to make our UDO compliant with currently adopted state regulations adopted in the 2000 Assembly, 2017 General Assembly. They adopted rules that basically do two things. It creates a new exempt type of subdivision, a division of property to settle in a state. Typically, this is where you have property that's left to heirs and a judge, or they've decided to split it up. This makes it where they can do a exempt subdivision that doesn't have to comply with our subdivision rules to get their lots and their property in their individual names. The second thing it does is it creates a new subdivision category called the qualifying subdivision. This is a new type of subdivision that doesn't meet the other defined non-exempt subdivisions. It doesn't quite meet the realm of a major subdivision. It's a parcel of land that would be over five acres. It's not been divided within the last 10 years, in that when they go to divide it, it wouldn't be into more than three lots. This type of subdivision would, like any subdivision exempt or not, would need to meet our current zoning regulations. The Planning Advisory Board has recommended adopted, adoption of this amendment, along with staff. It's a, again, it's to bring our ordinance into compliance with current state law. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counsel. Doesn't look like anybody has any questions.
It's, it's pretty simple.
Thank you very much, Jeremy.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to have a public hearing on this matter as required by our, that it's an ordinance change. So at this time, I'll recess the regular council meeting, up, up a public hearing on this matter. Anyone wishing to speak, please indicate by raising your hand. Again, no takers. Close the public hearing, reconvene a regular council meeting. Counsel, you're being asked to amend the text ordinance, the text amendment.
With adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment as so set forth in the agenda for this meeting?
Okay. Have motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next, we have multimodal center update, and Anthony will be providing us with an update. Anthony Prince?
Also have our architect with us, so I'm going to step back and let the architect sit where I am.
Okay.
Okay. I want to come on up. John. Can you see the... Get your seat. Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. Thank you for the time to present to you today. With me, of course, as Richard mentioned, is our architect, John Faribault. And also with us is Deanna Treble. She's our project manager. We all know what a great job she does. And I have to tell you that, that John's done an excellent job for us up to this point. The most important thing, at least, that we've learned is managing the creative personalities involved in this design process associated with the, with the multimodal center, namely Richard and I, so. But they've done an excellent job to this point. I can't emphasize that enough. And we have a blank slide. So just to go back in history a few years, you've seen these slides before, and as you recall, these came from a feasibility study that we did in 2012, 2013 to determine, is this something that's feasible in Jacksonville? And if so, what's the concept? What type of form would it take? These are the concept plans that we submitted to FTA, and of course, they were approved at that time. And ever since, we've been working with them on a funding strategy and also to move forward with the process to design to the point where we are today. The purpose, first and foremost, is to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of transportation. It's mainly our public transportation agencies that serve Jacksonville and Onslow County. First, of course, is being Jacksonville Transit, our own public transportation system, Onslow United Transit, Greyhound, as well as Amtrak. All four of those agencies will operate out of this building, and it'll improve, in turn, it'll improve coordination as well as connectivity. We want this facility to be a welcoming gateway to Jacksonville. So all of us have seen the way that Greyhound currently operates on Onslow Drive. Not sure that's necessarily the gateway that we want to have for our servicemen when they come to go to the schools at Camp Lejeune. So this is an awesome opportunity for us to improve that, that capability. And then we also would like to see this as a redevelopment catalyst, not only because of the scale of the investment that we're making here, but also because of the location. It's currently sited at, or it's going to be sited at the intersection of Marine Boulevard and Thompson Street. And so not only are we hoping that this will initiate or emphasize redevelopment along Marine Boulevard, but hopefully in the New River area as well. Just as a footnote there, we're scheduled for delivery of five new vehicles in the near future, and this is the graphics scheme that we're hoping to implement. The current graphics that we have on the buses have been there for 10 years, and so we felt that modernization was necessary. And you can see, this is a very trendy look. We want to keep up with the times. And this, this came out of Glenn's Group Media. Kevin actually put that together. It's a...
We were going to have pictures of each council member and the mayor in the windows. The problem is, they don't have a bus that has seven windows on its side.
We can work on that. The windows are also tinted as well, so. Funding strategy, you've seen this before. So the main point here is that we're using the value of the land, the $1.3 million that's been appraised, to leverage federal and state dollars to fund the design and construction. So you can see there that we're at about 8.4 million for that piece of the project. The good news on that is, is that we're not encumbering all of the land value to leverage the federal and state allocations that you see on the screen. So the only, the amount that we're encumbering right now is around $900,000. That leaves approximately $400,000 of land value available. And the way I look at that is it's a contingency for us. So if, in fact, we need additional federal or state resources, we have the leverage to go after that additional money if necessary. The timeline, again, FTA approval is complete. That happened around 2012, 2013. Design is in process. At this point, we're at about 20, 25% on the designs. But before we took the next step, we wanted to get some feedback from council as to the work that we've done to date to make sure that we're on the right track. We feel that we're in the ballpark. We feel pretty good about the site plan and the building layout and the footprint, et cetera. But I think there's still a little bit of work to be done on the profile, the exterior of the building. And you'll see that here in just a few minutes. Beginning construction, summer 19, and then project completion, those are, those are goals of ours, but there are a lot of contributing factors that will either determine whether we meet those, those dates or not. But that's what we're striving towards at this point. So moving to the site layout, what we learned along the way is that facilities like this have very specific geometric requirements. You know, we're talking about very large vehicles, we're talking about a certain number of vehicles, vehicles that need to go in certain directions, et cetera. So the bus platform itself, and the buses themselves, really kind of dictated a majority of the site. Paired with that, the fact that we've got some constraints on-site, mainly the geometry of our parcel, so you can see the sweeping property line there, is part of the rail, the railroad spur that used to, to be there. And then also, we've got a well site, which Wally's very well aware of, that we don't want to disturb. And then we also have some drainage over in here, and some drainage over in here that we have to, to deal with as well. So again, the geometrics of the property, as well as some of the geometrics of the, the operation itself, really kind of dictated the way the site would be laid out. But overall, because that equation was solved for us, I, I think it works pretty well. So let's just go through a couple of the, of the features here. First is the main entrance. Okay? You can see that the building itself faces Marine Boulevard. It's got a very forward stance, meaning it's not sitting behind a very large parking lot like you would see with a shopping center or something like that. You could also see that the amount of frontage along Marine Boulevard, that would be impacted by the development of the site as well. Ryan and, and his group, you know, they're going to work with us on a landscaping plan, streetscape, all of that, so that we can make sure that the, the front facade of the building and the curb appeal is where it needs to be. Passenger terminal, that's probably the most important aspect of this building. It is multimodal, so we definitely want to have as many trail connections as we can. We're, of course, going to have the one that's shown with the arrow, but then we're also going to have the one here at the front door. Bus platform, I call that a dog bone type of design. You can see why. But a lot of people call it a sawtooth. So the buses would queue up in each one of these individual slots right here. Each one of these individual slots. And then we have larger slots down here, directly in front of the building, for Amtrak and Greyhound. They run a lot larger vehicles than we currently do with our transit fleet. And then public parking, that's just one of the things at minimum that helped kind of determine how the site was laid out. We're looking at about 100 parking spaces in total. That's not only for the public parking in the front, but also some additional parking I'll show here on the next slide. Last thing is Thompson Street realigned. This is another constraint of the site, because as you probably recall, Thompson Street does something like this right now. It's offset on both sides of Marine Boulevard. So with this project, it was a little bit of a challenge, but it was an opportunity at the same time, in that we want to relocate Thompson Street to really where it should be. That helps us improve the stormwater in that area. It also helps for us to create some of the intersection geometry, so that the intersection will function the way that it really should, as a four-leg intersection. Moving on, breezeway to the platform. So please keep in mind this one reference point as we move through the rest of the slides, because we're going to look at profiles, and we're also going to look at planometric views. And, and that knowing where that breezeway is in relation to the site will really help you keep your bearings. And knowing where that breezeway is in relation to the site will really help you keep your bearings. So the breezeway will allow for folks to basically venture from short-term parking, which is right here in front of the building, through the site to the bus platform without going inside the building. They'd certainly be welcome to come in the building, but they don't necessarily have to. Onslow United Transit, as I mentioned, is going to be a tenant of the building. So they're going to have parking along the back that will not be available to the public. And we're going to have stormwater amenities. No question that stormwater has to be a part of the project, but we want it to enhance, not necessarily detract from the site itself. Looking at the interior of the building, again, the breezeway is the point of reference there. See that even though it's one building, it really kind of functions as two separate structures. On the left-hand side, we've got the operations piece. So all of our dispatchers and our drivers, as well as our passenger areas, will be on that side. On the right-hand side is our administrative wing. That's where the folks work that don't necessarily have frequent interaction with our passengers or our drivers. And you can see Marine Boulevard here to the front and the bus platform towards the back. Zooming into the operations side, we've got a passenger area that's pretty extensive. Of course, that's the main focus of this building, is accommodating the passenger. A ticketing area, so that we'll be able to sell tickets for Jacksonville Transit, as well as Amtrak and Greyhound. That's something that we don't currently do. A unique aspect of our military passengers is the fact that they show up in civilian attire. And then before they report, they have to change into their uniforms. And so we've spent a lot of time recognizing the unique needs of those passengers. We spent a lot of time with Chris White at the airport, learning about their experiences. Because if you think about it, this building is going to function very similar to the way the airport does. And he gave us some great pointers on changing rooms and evidently Marines like Wi-Fi and power and things like that. So we're going to end up having lots of Wi-Fi capacity and power receptacles in these passenger areas. Driver break room, that's something that we currently do not have. So drivers tend to take the break on the side of the road or in the bus itself. We don't have a training room as well. That's something that we could greatly benefit from. And then you can see where the operations staff would be. We currently have 11 folks that are, they basically fit themselves into four rooms in a closet. So moving forward, if I can toggle back to what that space looks like, you can see that each one of those folks between the area on the bottom there, as well as the area where it says ticketing, they'll have their individual workspace. Shifting gears to the administration side, one of the things that I was adamant about is that I really wanted to have some community space in this facility. And when I say community space, think about the community training room in the Center for Public Safety. So the room that's on the second floor there, where we have all of our meetings, it's got the televisions and the seats, et cetera. One of the key missions of the MPO, which will be located in this building, is of course, public engagement. So we really wanted to have a place on site where we could do that. Also, as staff grows or needs change, this area right here gives us flexibility to be divided up into office space or used for other purposes if need be. Our administrative assistant issues tons of passports. She's our passport extraordinaire, so we've got an area for that. But that's also what we consider our customer service space, our customer service meeting room. So if we have a passenger we need to talk to or somebody else that we need to talk to confidentially, that'll provide the opportunity. And of course, we've got administrative staff area, as well as a boardroom, where our TAC and our TCC would need. Excuse me. Looking at the front facade, excuse me. Again, the breezeway is our point of reference. So operations is on the left, administration is on the right. And we really kind of like the concept here that's shown in the layout. But some of the things that we want to work on are maybe varying the elevation of the roofs so that we, you know, eliminate some of these continuous horizontal planes. They're making it just look a little bit more interesting from the curb. But all of these are details. We feel pretty strong about the site plan and the building layout and the footprint. But more detail to come on that. As we started to look at the front of the building, there are two things we didn't want to do. First of all, we didn't want to come out of left field. We didn't want to just make something up and say, hey, this is our new multimodal center. We also didn't want to just copy and paste an existing city building. So the intent was to kind of meld those two things together, come up with something that's relatively unique, but at the same time, it includes some of those key city features that we've come to know. So you can see in the middle there, we have the, call that a pergola, right?
Well, a tower, or tower concept, entry tower.
Okay. I'm not good at the architectural language. But we have the city hall feature right there in the very front. We can tell where that came from, right? And then you can also see on the bottom right-hand side, elements of the depot that come out. And we felt that those were some of the strongest features from that building, denoting that, yes, this is Jacksonville, North Carolina. This is the address of where you're at. And even though the tower itself wouldn't necessarily require a gable vent, it's just a good architectural detail to carry over. Here, you can also see the way the breezeway would work. This is just a large, covered, open space that allows people to walk directly through the two wings to the platform area, if they so choose. And of course, we'd have lovely landscaping like this out there as well. Other key features, so the brackets that you see, as well as the overhang with the existing depot, those are things that we would like to echo with this building, not only from an aesthetical standpoint, but a functional standpoint. The brackets help to support the overhang, the additional overhang that you see there. And the overhang, of course, shelters people who are walking around the building from the elements. And you could also see the very distinct similarities between Fire Station 2 and this proposed facility. Namely, of course, materials are pretty consistent across the board. We're looking at steel and brick, as well as stucco in these areas here. And it's really undecided what we would do with the roof, as far as materials go. But it's likely that we would have a combination of metal and composite shingles. Really, that's dependent upon cost. But the good thing is, you know, the depot has a composite shingle roof. It looked like it always has. And then the other city facilities have, of course, metal roofing, which, you know, it shows commonality amongst all of this. Did I miss anything on the?
Pretty much on the roof situation, that's, we were thinking about some type of synthetic type of material for the roofing shingles as another maybe alternative versus asphalt shingles.
Something that has longevity, the quality appearance, but doesn't necessarily take us to the same cost level of metal roofing.
Something hurricane-proof.
Right.
They have those faux slate roofs nowadays.
That's exactly.
They're lighter, they're, you know, they're more economical. But, you know, labor's kind of still a problem with them, just because they're expensive to put up.
It's exactly what you said. Labor's pretty much six and one half dozen of another. But the material, a synthetic-type rubber-based material, and that's actually what we were thinking. It creates like a slate look, and the material is really, you know, very thick. And it's basically, you control the wind load designed by the number of nails you use on it, that type of thing. But yeah, it's a nice material.
I've not seen any. I've seen it advertised, but I've never seen any in around east North Carolina.
It's got a 50-year guarantee on it, which is pretty substantial. But it's so scary in the way it looks, you know, nobody could tell it really wasn't slate. I mean, it's that meticulously made. The edges and everything are very nice.
The scary part about it, of course, meaning that the general public thinking that we put real slate on the building. And John brought this material to our attention, because that's what they decided to use for a similar facility in Wilmington. And that's the concern they have, is that it looks great, it might look a little bit too good, and they might receive some scrutiny from the public on, why did you use real slate on the roof? And in fact, it's basically recycled tires, isn't it?
What about a clock feature? Is the one that's been here, one that's, is it maintenance, any problems with our clock?
We spent a lot of time.
Design is not a good design for a clock, but there's probably better options.
We spent a lot of time talking about a clock feature. And in fact, let's see, if you go back to this slide, the gable vent and the clock feature, I mean, there's commonality there in the shape. But the thing that we're most concerned about is the maintenance. We know that the ones here in City Hall are maintenance-intensive. And from a practical standpoint, most people, you know, they're using their cellphone to keep time these days. So it is an element that we can certainly consider, but we just need to make sure that if we do that, that it's a lower maintenance option than we currently have.
What about your engagement room? Expound on it.
Engagement room?
Yeah, what?
The community room? The, this particular room, like I said, is almost identical to the community training room at the Center for Public Safety. So the intent would be to use it for MPO functions, where we have public meetings on roadway projects or transportation plans, et cetera, or any other community event that we choose to host in the building. We'd also entertain things like regional training opportunities. We do that a lot with our transit partners. Basically, host a training session here and allow others from, say, New Bern, Wilmington, Kinston, et cetera, to come and join us. But one of the things that we've found is that the community training room is so popular that it's somewhat challenging to get into these days. It's a very useful space. And so we wanted to echo that here, not only because that's part of the MPO mission, but also because it seems like we need another asset like that.
You're going to have a lot of people going in and out of there. What do you plan on doing, feeding them concession stands or vending machines, I mean, or what?
As far as the operations side? So what we have currently, we looked at the option of adding commercial space to the building, like a public-private partnership type of arrangement. But I have to tell you that that's exceedingly challenging with a federally funded project, really to the point where we'd probably end up having to fund that space ourself. But what we have currently in here, we have two key features. One is we've got a bank of vending machines, which is kind of your base-level concession option. But then we also have what we're calling a military hospitality area. Very similar to the USO space that you see in the airport. And we haven't talked to the USO about whether they would staff it or not, but we feel like there are opportunities to provide vending and snacks, et cetera, in both of those places. Also, in the future, if we feel that there is a certain element of demand, we'll have to play that by ear. But this area right in here, that's kind of outside of the ticketing booth, could be set up as a light snack stand. What we have done also is we've talked to some property owners around this general vicinity. And one in particular is interested in developing some commercial use, potentially with restaurants and things of that nature, basically right next door to the site. So we're hoping with the vending that we provide, potentially some sort of snack stand in the future, plus the adjacent growth in existing opportunities like KFC, et cetera, that the food demand would be met.
Right now, it's virtually across the street from Kentucky Fried Chicken, Dairy Queen, and Burger King.
And as we redesign the Thompson Street intersection, we'd have pedestrian signals with the crosswalks, et cetera, trying to get people to and from.
Before you leave that.
Yes, sir.
Since the mayor pretends to. I'll turn this down. I don't think I look as good as Mr. Lozera. When we discussed the ticketing and passenger area with John, the architect, he brought up what I thought was an excellent idea. If you could, you know, Jacksonville began its experience with the military in the 40s. So why not design that passenger area as if you were walking into a passenger terminal in the 40s? So what we're thinking is that not the entire, not the entire inside of the building, but that particular part, you would walk in and you would see features that you would have seen if you were coming to Jacksonville or to any community in the 1940s. And he's going to do some mock-ups for us, and you will see those at a later time. But I think his thought was an excellent thought that brings the history of the community right into this facility. The other point that we would like to make is the cost of operating the facility, because we do not want this cost to fall to the taxpayer of Jacksonville. So if you would, Anthony, discuss how this will generate revenue that will offset its own electricity bills, cleaning, and so forth.
Well, let's talk about it in pieces, if you don't mind. So from an administrative standpoint, meaning a staffing standpoint, really, we're not adding anybody new. Okay, so we're taking folks from the One Call Center, Onslow United Transit, and Jacksonville Transit. We're basically just moving them over into this building. The only additional staffing that we might need is support for custodial services and pickup around the grounds. From a revenue generating standpoint, we intend to generate revenue, well, we know we're going to generate revenue from Onslow United Transit being a tenant. They have agreed to pay us, the amount has yet to be determined, but they have agreed to pay us rent, monthly rent, to actually occupy this space. We also know that Greyhound is willing to split some of their proceeds with us if, in fact, they're, if, in fact, we're able to sell tickets from the facility. Amtrak, that's still up in the air, but there have been arrangements in the past with other communities for profit sharing. So the good news is, is that we're not going to have to add a bunch of additional staff. And then there is significant potential for income generation. The money that we get from Onslow United Transit, the good thing about that is, we can use, we can turn that around and use it as local match to leverage federal funds at basically an 80/20 split to operate the facility. So it's a little bit complicated, but the good news is, we're not paying the, we're not flipping the whole bill. The biggest challenge for us is the actual capital cost of building the facility. And once we can overcome that, the revenue that we generate versus the existing investment that we make in transit should cover the operating costs.
You've never mentioned what the sizes are. What's the square footage of the building and the size of the site itself?
The site, do you remember what that is, John?
Yeah, it's roughly around three, somewhere around three acres, I believe, is the, somewhere in that percentage number. And the building itself is, when we talk, it's two different wings, but it's still talking as one building. It's right at 15,000 square feet. So each wing is 7,500 square feet.
Looks bigger.
It certainly does, doesn't it? It looks a lot bigger.
We put a lot of stuff into it.
Well, that's one of the reasons, Anthony, go back to the facade design.
The front facade?
Yeah, the front facade. That's one of the reasons why we want to continue to work on the roof design. This drawing, the rendering currently, because the top elevation continues through the whole way, it looks a lot bigger than I think we want it to look. That's a very long-looking building. And that's why we've asked John to come up with a few additional concepts that might drop the sections on each side of the tower a couple of feet. And that way, give you a little bit more variation on the roof design, making it look, in my opinion, a little more friendly and more enticing than that long roof design currently gives.
And once we also get to the point where we're generating perspective shots, renderings, you'll get a much better perspective as to, you know, how these particular areas of the building kind of stick out further than the others. And we'll give you that real 3D sense, but Richard is right. We are very interested in varying some of the profile of the roof lines there to give it more of an interesting appearance. it more of an interesting appearance from the street.
It looks expensive, too, now. You say it's 15,000 square feet, but maybe you can break it out further down the road as far as all the road realignment and the different cost, you know, what's going to cost.
One of the things that we are concerned about right now is the variability in the bidding market. And Mr. Warden knows all about that.
He used to.
He, excuse me, he used to. Correct. Yes, he used to. But it's recent enough, I'm sure you recall. Anyways, the challenge that we're facing from a cost estimation and a bidding standpoint is that pricing is all over the map. One of the things that we're going to do to try to combat that is that we're going to do a series of cost estimates as we move forward through the design process. What we don't want to do is get to 100% design, bid the thing, and it come back $2 million over budget. That's just, in my opinion, not responsible on our part. So what John has built into his contract with us, it's either, is it three or?
Three, three different estimates. One's the, I call, what we're in now, we technically call it preliminary design. So we've got a preliminary design estimate that breaks out the site and the building. The site is very important with the overall project because it's such a big element in comparison. And then there's another one that would be done at 30%, and then another one at the final completion, which is what you hopefully take into the bidding to use as the litmus paper for the bidding numbers.
So as we get those cost estimates and we see how those relate to our budget, we're definitely going to be value-engineering the project along the way, hoping to contain costs so that there are no surprises at the end. But as I mentioned, the variability in the bidding market these days is just challenging. But we will have a better sense as we progress.
Any other questions you have for us? We were providing this basically for information. If you see anything that you really don't support, let us know. We will be bringing back updates.
Yes, sir. We'll probably be back within the next two, three months or something like that.
Easily.
To talk about materials, like Richard was saying, you know, the color of the building, the interior features, et cetera. So there will be more decision points as we move forward.
You mentioned short-term parking. What about long-term parking?
I mean, like overnight parking?
Overnight parking.
So we currently don't see a whole lot of that in the way that Amtrak and Greyhound operate. But when they were operating over here on New Bridge Street, we did see a handful of cars, maybe two or three at a time. The intent would be for those to.
Space on the right?
Yeah, for those to occur in this general area, somewhere in that public parking area. And we would hope to control the numbers through some type of permitting system, not that we're going to charge people for it, but we do want to know why there's a vehicle staying in the parking lot overnight.
You mentioned 100 parking spaces. Was there another spot? I don't see 100 sitting there.
So we've got parking out front here. And then we've got these guys around here. We've also got another parking on the operations side of the building and then back in here as well. It's hard to believe, but that does add up to about, I think, 90-something parking.
So we're in that vicinity.
Because there's 60 here and then there's, so it does add up.
Surprising, yeah, it just doesn't look it.
It doesn't. That's one of the best things about it, in my opinion, is it's just not a massive parking lot in front of the building. We want this to be an attractive feature for that corridor.
There's no expandable land around there, though, is there? In case, say, your need grew and yours out.
Well, we're hoping that at some point in the future, we might be able to acquire some adjacent property as redevelopment occurs. We do know that the commercial development that I talked about is likely to occur in that area right there. We do have some residual property over on this side. It's a lot larger than it looks right there. It is developable. And we're hoping to make it more developable by relocating the road that goes back to the water tower. But then as businesses like the propane dealership, others in that area start to transition, we would probably look to try to acquire properties for future development. If, in fact, it's needed.
Fire Station 5, weren't we at one time talking about doing something on that? Is that gone by the wayside?
If you look at where it really ought to be located, you know, that's not the best place. Our biggest strain really is going further north on Marine Boulevard and some of the improvements in some of the roads have given us better coverage in some of our areas that would have caused us to look closely at a station in that location.
I think that was, that was one of the planned sites at one time, but the growth pattern tended to go more north and.
Especially, you know, we talk about the commercial growth out Marine Boulevard and really you talk about, you know, where Station 4 is, where it was situated. It was situated with the assumption that more, there would be more area annexed up there. So the backside of Station 4 really is not, its coverage zone doesn't lay over the city. So, you know, I mean, you'll look at how does, where is the ideal location for a station like 4? And then where would, if you added another station, where would that go?
And if you think about the proximity between this side and Fire Station 1, the Public Safety Building, I mean, they're really close together. So from a practical standpoint.
Any other questions or thoughts at this point? We do commend John. You know, we have several architects we're working with whose first names are John, and we continue to get great service out of both of them. So John, well done.
We're going to continue to hire Johns, right?
We do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Only other thing that we had was just some updates on One City Moments. Glenn, can you show those very quickly? I don't know whether you can read that. Actually, I can't read it from there. So Anthony, you have the monitor, so read that for us if you would.
Let's see, it's from Bryce. And it says, "Hey, man, could you do me a favor and tell your mom that I spoke with one of her officers last night with the last name Brantley? Because we witnessed an accident and he is a great officer. He was very friendly and talked to us for a while and is a great guy. One of the best interactions I've had with an officer in my life. She's doing a great job with her officers. Tell her to keep up the good work." Excuse me.
That's what One City is all about, every one of us representing you as a council in this community in a positive way. And we will make sure that this employee is in fact recognized accordingly. So let's move to the next one. It's about community benefit. I don't know whether you recognize the new police uniforms that you're proposing. You know, with the pay scale, they felt we should have new uniforms, too. The officer on the left is Officer Pancake, and the officer on the right is Officer Bacon.
Bacon.
Got it. Okay. The real names of these people, let's see, Jesse Brantley and Justin Powers. Now, that's Austin Powers' brother, Justin Powers. But through the tip-a-cop program that occurred at Denny's, they raised a total of $1,638 for Special Olympics.
Very good.
And again, that shows you the type of city employees that you have that are willing to wear Pancake and Bacon outfits in order to raise money for a good cause.
With a smile on their face.
That's exactly right. The third one is the base event. I'm not sure that you were there, but believe it or not, they had over 9,000 people turn out for this base fest. Now, they had a similar base fest in the other Jacksonville down at Mayport. They didn't even have 1,000 people come out for it. But in Jacksonville, North Carolina, our Jacksonville, they had over 9,000 people come out for it.
Is it true that some people are still waiting to get home?
That's exactly right. And that's why Anthony needs.
We made sure that everybody made it home.
That's why he needs more buses. But you can see how huge this crowd was.
Wow, that's a lot of people.
A great event.
Well, this was.
This was on the base, on Camp Lejeune.
Oh, it was the Fourth of July.
And in fact, with regard to traffic operations, we did receive some very positive feedback from PMO as well as the Highway Patrol thanking us for what we were able to do for them during Fourth of July. It used to be a much more challenging situation than it is today.
That concludes all the items. We have a reminder, we will not meet again until the Wednesday after National Night Out. So look forward to seeing y'all in August or before that if you have needs. So Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you. All right, I would entertain a motion now to adjourn.
Does it move?
All in favor?